I see it's seven o'clock, so we will begin. Before we begin, I want to say that remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded and is being shown live. So please mute your either mute your PC or your phone. If you're using the phone, you can use a star six to mute and unmute your phone. Having said that, if someone doesn't mute their phone, our township manager Greg will mute it for you. And that could be a little more serious than muting it yourself. So I will ask everyone to stand with me and join me in the pledge of allegiance as we call this meeting to order. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Sherry. You did a very good job of waving the flag. Okay, public comments. Are there any public comments on the agenda items? Greg, have you received any public comments?
No public comments on agenda items.
All right. Thank you, sir. We will move on. Announcements, we will have an executive session for legal matters directly after this meeting. Moving on to the consent agenda, the consent agenda tonight contains the May 20, 2020 meeting minutes, the win plan review status, escrow release and vouchers, emergency services report, building zoning and building permit report, public works report, conservation committee report, treasures report and payment of bills. Greg, would you at this time read the treasures report as people have requested?
Sure. The general fund has $1,049,325.16. Highway 233,936.33. Open space, $1,069,771.61. The park fund, $22,005.88. Equipment funds, $16,847.74. Highway capital, 12919. Street light, $36,768.91. The reserve funds, the general fund reserve, $371,449.7. Open space, Manderfield, $51,178.4. Stormwater funds, $6,795.58. And the escrow funds, $608,397.90.
Thank you. First, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, sir. What, once we get the first and second, then then we'll open it up.
Okay, well, this has to do with the with the minutes. I have a I have a correction. I do not agree with the sentence in the minutes. So if you want to proceed, go ahead and then we'll talk about.
Okay, so do I have a do I have a motion to approve? Okay, do I have a second?
David Collingwood will second. I also have a comment to make about.
Okay, then we'll open it up. Jay Kaiser, you had the first question.
Okay, I just want to make acknowledgement to a change regarding where there was a discussion about the barn. And Mr. Collingwood acknowledged that the barn committee did get $5,000 for seed money to repair the barn. However, the reason it never progressed was because the save the barn committee did not have the support of the supervisors at that time. That is incorrect. They did have, we we did give them our support. However, we did not support the taxpayers being responsible for the barn. It was supposed to be fundraised monies to fix the barn up. And and as a matter of fact, the person that gave the money to Mr. Collingwood even offered a place to have the fundraiser. So I want to make that correction to make sure that people do not think that the supervisors did not support saving the barn, fixing the barn up. It was a matter of where the monies were coming from at the time. And Mr. Miller, you went with us when we went to look at the barn that we looked at.
Yes.
So I believe you could you could also, Mr. Duvall, and I would pretty much be sure that he would confirm that we did support saving the barn, or we wouldn't have went to all the extent we did. I just want to make sure that it is in the minutes that are not in the minutes that we the supervisors did not support it. We did. We just didn't support spending taxpayer dollars on it. That is all. Thank you.
I do not have any problem with having your statement added to the tonight's minutes reflecting back to those other minutes, Jay, if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Okay, and and David?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the minutes would be page six, the first full paragraph where it states that $5,000 of seed money was returned to the township from the save the barn committee. There was no money given by the township to the save the barn committee. That came as a private donation. So no money was returned to the township.
Okay, then can we can we make sure that that gets fixed too?
Yep, I confirm that myself. I agree with what Mr. Collingwood just said.
Okay, so both of those will be added in as changes. Is there anything else in the consent agenda that needs discussion?
I have nothing.
And David?
I have nothing.
Okay, Greg, has are there any public comments on the consent agenda?
Hold on. Let's see. No, there's none.
Having said that, we have we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? No one's opposed, so it passes. Confirmed appointments, there are none tonight. So we'll move on to the committee reports. We'll begin with planning commission report chairman, Chris Durstein. You may be on mute, Chris.
There we are. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right. So PC planning commission met last Tuesday. We had three applicants. The first was Tim Snyder, Butter Creek Builders. He brought back a revised sketch plan that he had presented last August, actually, which has which was a revision of an approved plan for 13 lots on 54ish acre site. The approved plan from, I don't know how long ago it was, that had a P loop interior road, which they would like to change to a 1,600 foot cul-de-sac. They presented this new design last August. And since the cul-de-sac is 850 feet longer than Souda allows, PC wanted to hear, you know, what the fire marshal had to say and what the public works had to say about having that long as cul-de-sac. Public work has no problem. Fire marshal wanted to see areas where they could set up fire pools in case there was a fire back in there. PC was still uncomfortable with not having any type of emergency access to to the cul-de-sac lane. So we asked them to try to find a way to to provide one just in case of emergency, you know, if there's a fire midway, you know, people are going to be trapped in back and not be able to get out. So that was it for Snyder. I'm assuming they're going to try to find something to, you know, find a way to get back to that farther deeper into the cul-de-sac with an emergency lane. We'll see what they come back with. Do you have any questions for Butter Creek Builders?
I do not. I was at the meeting and I heard all and it's a good recap.
All right. Second applicant was Procom Roofing. They've purchased the site that was owned by Wesco Construction on Bethlehem Pike down here. Wesco had been approved, had the site approved for a, that was a recycling construction type of business. They never constructed that and sold the property. Procom has made some revisions to their plan, including some dimensional changes to the buildings. They plan to construct the rear building first, that will have office and storage areas, and then, you know, construct the front building if and when needed for expansion. They had a handful of waivers, I think it was four waivers, that actually carried over from the Wesco project. PC was fine with them. They had one area that they they felt they couldn't get enough trees in. They had another area that was pretty wide open to their southern border, southern neighbor board. So we asked them to relocate the the trees that they couldn't put in. We asked them to put on a property line and it sounded like they were fine with that. So all that being said, PC voted to recommend a revised preliminary final for them. So I'm assuming they're gonna be coming in hopefully next month. I would assume next month. They didn't have a ton of work to be getting done to present to the supervisors.
Right.
So that was it for Procom. You have any questions for that?
I do not, Jay or David?
Nope, I have none.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good. I'm good with the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Third applicant was THP Investments. They've acquired the former Precision Finishing property, which is just below the hospital there. I think behind Stone Ridge. They submitted a plan for 75 foot unit, 75, 75 unit age qualified townhouse development. And again, the main concern with this plan is the cul-de-sac. They have, it's over, over 1,000 feet, I believe, with over, I think they have 20 homes on the on the lane. And again, you know, we call for 12 max and 800 feet max. So this is is way beyond. They do have a 10 foot path planned to connect to the to the cul-de-sac ball, but it's no one's quite sure if it's appropriate for emergency vehicles or people trying to exit if there was no other way out of there due to a fire. A few other minor items that they need to get cleaned up. So PC, planning commission asked them to come up with some better access and look for some, you know, fire marshal view on the on the access, emergency access. And that was it for THP. Any questions for that?
None for me? David?
David has none.
I have, Jay has none.
Okay.
Oh, somebody phoned them.
You're not talking, please? Go ahead, Chris.
All right. Last item, we dealt with the alternate planning commission member. Tony Bogner was the only applicant for the position. So we voted to recommend having Tony as a new alternate member. So we're passing that to you.
Okay, well, I can tell you, I think Tony's an excellent choice. Known him for a few years now, and he's definitely dedicated himself to doing things for the township and keeping himself updated. So I will make a recommendation that we add Tony to the Tony Bogner to the planning commission as the alternate member. Do I have a second?
You have a second, Jay Kaiser.
Okay, thank you, Jay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great, thank you. Opposed? There are none? It passes.
All right. So that was all we had. So that is my report.
All right, Chris. I will make, or can I get someone to make a motion to approve the planning committee report?
David Collingwood will make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jay. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? There are none? Okay, moving on. Park and Rec Committee, Dave Rice.
All right, we've got lots of good stuff going on with the parking rec finally getting closer to green, a little over about 10 days, 10 days ish. I got a couple.
Yeah.
My fingers are crossed and I got lots of positive energy going towards it. So I'm thinking green. So in all hopes that everything's going green, we got a couple of projects that the parking rec's working on. We're working on a park tree plan. We're working on a park bench plan. So that way we can have ideas for the trees, since there's some reduction in trees, replanting trees, getting some new trees in there, as well as the bark, the park bench scenario. So we know where each one is, the which ones are more realized, which ones have dedications on them as well. So we can kind of lay it out and have a game plan for where each one is and when they need some renovations or, you know, rejuvenations to get them spruced back up. So we can kind of keep a better track of them. So those are some projects we're working on, as well as we got a couple of events coming up. August 15th, we're going to stay with the movie in a park, which is probably going to be between two different movies, Sing and the Addams Family. So we're going back and forth. We'll figure that out. And hopefully April or August 15th, we'll have movie in a park will have success, social distancing, all that kind of stuff. Generally, you're social distancing anyway, because the families are generally sitting together and you're outside in the bottom section of the park. So that's coming up. We'll have reminders about November 8th, which is going to be our Veterans Memorial plaque up dedication ceremony. We're looking to have, you know, some special invitations going out. Lots of people that are hopefully on that list that can be able to attend. And hopefully, you know, hoping for good weather and we can, you know, get a lot of good things. We're going to have our fall newsletter coming out soon in the fall, obviously, but working on that. So we can have some of these reminders out there for everybody. So when they get the newsletter, they have the reminders of our events coming up. And as well, we have baseball coming back up. So we're going to have the Little League as well as the high schools going to be doing a summer league. They're going to be doing a couple of sessions. As soon as I have all the schedules, I will send them to Greg so he can dispense them out. So everybody has those schedules. And again, that's going green. Their practices and stuff like that are still eligible. We have CDC guidelines and Bucks County Health Department guidelines that we have in the yellow phase for practices. I think that is all.
There was one issue about renting the pavilions. Is the township going to start allowing the renting of pavilions?
Yes.
I think we should rent them once we go green.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with rent. Oh, my other two supervisors here, but I don't have a problem with them renting once we go green, which like Dave said, could be in about 10 days, nine days, something. Does anyone else have a problem with that?
No, Jay Kaiser, I don't have a problem. Go ahead, David. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Jay. I have no problem, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I have none either. I'm ready to rent them whenever the township manager sees fit.
Okay, yeah, we'll leave that up to Greg to start running them out. Okay, Dave, I had one other question for you. You're talking about a tree plant. Are you looking to plant more trees this year? Or are you planning for next spring?
It, we have, oh, I just lost the train of thought. The if we have any coming in from any, any building projects that are going to be brought into the park, nothing, probably until next year, most likely, nothing in the plans. We're just trying to get a plan together. So we know where we want to put them. So we have a plan for Greg. So when we have them on hand, we can actually, you know, Greg will have the plan in hand. So he knows what we're kind of looking for and what types of trees and stuff like that.
Because we did just lose, how many, Greg? Over 100 trees were taken down? Was that right?
Approximately, yes.
Yeah. So a lot of them are on the outer edge, but I think we need some new trees, Dave.
Yep, absolutely. That's why we're going to have some pictures and stuff like that. And hopefully you have them all up on the website or, yeah, I guess on the website. So we can see some areas and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone, David or Jay, do you have any questions for Dave?
No, good luck.
No, I've been at the meeting. I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, and I will make a motion to approve the park and rec report. Do I have a second?
Jay Kaiser will second.
Thank you, Jay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. There are none?
It passes. Okay, commission reports, police report, Chief Rod Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The police report for activity for the Penrich Regional Police Department for May of 2020. The department handled 394 calls for service. Of those, 176 were in East Rock Hill Township and 218 were in West Rock Hill Township. The department handled 16 traffic crashes. Five were in East Rock Hill and 11 in West Rock Hill. Seven were reportable crashes and nine were non-reportable crashes. The department handled five part one crimes and 28 part two crimes in May. The crimes are as follows in East Rock Hill, two theft cases, three criminal mischief cases, three drug cases, three harassment cases, one ordinance violation, one dog law violation, one DUI, one disorderly conduct, one loitering and prowling at night, three trespass violations, and one unauthorized use of auto. In West Rock Hill, the crimes are as follows, sex defense against a minor, criminal mischief, two burglary cases, two DUI cases, one harassment, one possession of marijuana, two dog law violations, a flimflam violation, and a disorderly, two disorderly conducts. The department also had the following charges filed in May of 2020, one criminal trespass charge, one loitering charge, two possession of marijuana, one possession of drug paraphernalia, three DUI charges, one public drunkenness charge, and three harassment charges. And the officers also conducted 169 traffic enforcement details, 24 details on Old Bethlehem Pike, issued one verbal traffic warning, 35 traffic citations and 25 written warnings. And officers also conducted 574 business checks. Two other notes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank the supervisors of both townships and the Penrich Regional Police Commission for allowing the Penrich Regional Police Department to again host the blood drive, which will be July 16th, 2020, at the station from 2 to 7. As you know, well know that due to the virus, you know, blood supply is low. So I'm thankful that, you know, the Red Cross is making necessary adjustments to deal with COVID-19 and continuing with the blood drive. So I do appreciate township for allowing that. Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read a statement that the department posted on Facebook and our crime watch account regarding the situation that's been going on. That statement that follows, "The recent events surrounding the senseless death of George Floyd in Minneapolis have changed our country and police work. With this senseless act, we are all hoping that it will bring positive change. Our Penrich community has always been supportive of the police, and we are fortunate to work in such a climate. Our community policing philosophy is to be a part of the community in which we serve, and we will protect everyone without prejudice. Our police department is fully staffed to serve our community 24/7, and we actively patrol to protect our citizens and businesses. We now need the community more than ever to be our eyes and ears. If you observe suspicious activity, please call immediately. On behalf of the entire staff of Penrich Regional Police Department, please continue to work with us to bring peaceful and meaningful change. It is our honor to serve alongside you." And that's my police report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chief. David and Jay, do you have any comments or questions?
I have one comment, Chief. Well done. Nice statement. And I support the Regional Police Department 100%.
We all do. I have no other comments. I'd make a motion to accept the police report.
Okay, let me add that I also, as chief knows, support them 100% and help out whenever I can to make sure everything is going smooth. So and do I have a second for accepting a Jay? Okay, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? No, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Thank you. The Joint Rec Authority, well, that's me. Unfortunately, Holiday House pool will not be opening this year. We thought long and hard about it. We looked at all of our options. And we just came to the conclusion that with all the restrictions that are put in place, along with the staffing, there was just no way we could open. The it takes about 18 guards minimum, lifeguards minimum, to get the pool up and running and keep it running all summer with vacations and everything else. We had nine and we only had one other applicant that that was available. A second applicant actually went to work for Menlo. So there's and we would have needed another probably five people to keep the place clean all summer. So we were looking at a staff we just didn't have. And it just, it just became too overwhelming. And we just decided that for safety sake, we would not be opening the pool this year. And that was a joint decision by the whole Sellersville, West Rock Hill, Joint Rec Authority, and it was a unanimous vote to not open the pool. So having said that, we did fill the pool because we wanted to bring in someone to look for leaks. We had a scuba diver come in and use his dive to go around and find all the leaks he could find in the pool. And he patched them while he was down there. And he did find a major leak underneath in the diving well that was in the the pipe leading back to the pump, pump to the filter house, excuse me, back to the filter house. So we have re-drained the pool and we have someone coming in to to work on that specific crack, which is just at the entrance way to it. But it was too much for the the scuba diver to fix it out of his hands. So we are, we are making repairs to the pool. We are going to get in our new equipment that we had ordered, but we are not going to install it now until next year. So that's all I really have for tonight is Jay or David, do you have any comments about the report?
No comments from David.
No, no comments from Jay.
All right, thank you. Do you have any comments, Greg, on?
No comment.
Okay, then I will make a motion or I will ask for a motion to approve the Joint Rec Authority report.
So moved.
Jay second?
Jay Kaiser will second, yes.
Yeah, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none? Okay, moving on, the tax collectors report. Is Suzanne Clark with us tonight?
I don't think she's on.
Okay.
I can hear her.
Can you? Do you have the information, Greg?
Information. The total remitted this month is 44,49386.
Okay. All right. I would also like to add to that, that because of COVID, the building's been shut down and we were making a lot of changes in the building. And one of them was to clean out the front office. Now that the front door is handicapped accessible, we've opened the front office up for our tax collector. So you would come in the front entrance and turn left and her office would be right there. You don't go in the back door and up those back stairs anymore. So when we go green, it will be open for her and she'll be available for those of you that like to come in and pay your taxes directly. So so I will make a motion to to approve the tax collectors report. Do I have a second?
Yes, you have a second, Jay Kaiser. I just want to add one thing there, Mr. Miller. Can you, can you make sure that you announce that, and I know Suzanne would do this, they're given an extension. I think it's July 30th for to pay your taxes at face value before penalty, July 30th. I think there was a one, one month extension given.
That's correct. She did. She did announce that last month. We should have announced that again this month. You're right. So the face value only, I mean, the penalty phase is still as it was, but for face value, yes, it was pushed out one month.
That would be July 31st.
July 31st. Okay, thank you.
No, 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 I don't think so. I think it's July 30th, July 30th.
It is the 30th, not the 30th.
Okay, July 30th. Okay. All right. Can I get a, any other questions on the taxpayers' report, tax collectors' report? Hearing, can I get a motion to approve the tax collectors' report?
I'll make a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. And second, David, all in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. Opposed? None? Passes. Engineers report, Steve Balla.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you see on the agenda, I don't
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you see on the agenda, I don't have any specific projects to comment on tonight. I would just say I do have on my list of things to do. I know there's a drainage concern. Mr. Cullen was interested in. I will contact you to, when I get over there to take a look at that. I just haven't been in the township a whole lot of late, but we'll get that in the next week. So if there isn't any other questions, I don't have anything else.
Okay. David or Jay, do you have any questions for the engineer? Township engineer?
I have none. He's going to take care of my concerns.
Okay.
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a, a motion to approve the engineer's report?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? None? Okay, pass. Solicitors report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only item on the solicitor's report tonight is yet another disaster resolution for your consideration. Last month, when you passed the disaster resolution, the termination of the disaster was tied to the governor's terminating the disaster for the state. There was some back and forth in Harrisburg regarding when that should end and who had the right to end it. So it seemed prudent to do another resolution tying an end to the disaster to, to the board's discretion as opposed to following the state. I, it's before you for your consideration, and I believe the next available resolution is 2020-12, if you wanted to make a resolution to that effect.
Okay. All right, David or Jay, do you have any questions or concerns about the resolution?
David does not.
Okay, Jay?
Jay does not.
Okay, then could I get a motion to approve Resolution 2020-12 Continuing Disaster Declaration Emergency in Response to COVID-19?
So moved by David.
A second?
I'll second it, Jay.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? None? It passes. Greg, do you need me to come in tomorrow and sign that?
No, you can come in, or I can email it to you, whichever way you want.
I'll just email it, and I'll send it back to you. That's perfect. Thank you. Okay, Township Managers Report, Greg Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is we have a zoning hearing board request for a meeting. In the board's packet is a list of rules that I think should be adhered to if we do have a zoning hearing board in the meeting room. One, the hearing must meet all CDC health guidelines as well as state guidelines. Two, masks must be worn throughout the meeting or the hearing. Social distancing of at least six feet must take place. Request that evidence must be submitted electronically one week prior to the hearing. The applicant shall attempt to limit the number of witnesses to the best of their ability. And if residents wish to attend the hearing and the meeting room exceeds 15 people, this includes the zoning hearing board members, solicitors, court reporters, township staff, the hearing must be continued to a later date. The most amount of people we can have in the township building in the meeting room is 15.
Right, and that is because of the size of the room and the six-foot distancing. So I've through this several times, taken a look at that. So I would, I would agree with that. If, like you said, if they can fit within the realm of the 15 people, then they can have their hearings. Otherwise, they're going to have to either hold it by a Zoom meeting or Google meeting like we're having, or postpone it until a later date. I would agree. Jay and David, what are your thoughts?
I agree, David.
I agree. I agree.
Do we need to make a motion to approve that?
Yes, please.
Okay, can someone make a motion then? Could, could I get a motion for a zoning hearing, for the zoning hearing board request? And the, and the requirements we've put upon it?
So moved by David.
And a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Kaiser.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? Okay, those pass. The Township Building Reopening Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, in your packets is a list of regulations that I would like to enforce to reopen the township building once we go green. Once the state goes to the green phase in Bucks County, we will open the doors. If it goes back to yellow, we will close the doors. The building will follow all CDC health guidelines as well as state guidelines. The public shall wear masks entering the building. Social distancing at least of six feet must take place. No more than one person slash resident in the front lobby area. Others must wait outside. Appointments are strongly encouraged. The use of electronic submission permits, payments, et cetera, strongly encouraged. The use of drop-off boxes, we have drop-off boxes out front of the building, are encouraged for SALDO applications, zoning hearing board, and building and zoning permits. And the township meeting room will not be allowed to be used by the public, only for township meetings.
Okay, and once again, even if we reopen the building for, for particularly this meeting, I can see where we might be able to hold our planning commission meeting live if Chris chooses, chooses to do so. If we don't get a lot of people in the audience. But I, I don't know how we would hold a board of supervisors' meeting when we have 25 or more people coming to those meetings in addition to the people that are sitting up front. So I think they will have to continue for a while on, on the Google meetings like we're doing right here tonight, which I think have been very successful myself. I think we've got them all recorded. They're out there for everyone to view. So I would, I would ask David and Jay, do you have any concerns about the reopening plan that Greg has put forward?
Jay has no concerns. I agree, and I support Greg's decision and his plan.
Thank you. David?
David is, yeah, I, I have the, I've reviewed the policies. I think Greg did a nice job, and I appreciate his work. So, yeah, I support it as well.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the Township Building Reopening Plan?
I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Jay.
I will second it.
Thank you, David. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, it's passed. Fee Schedule Update.
Yes, the last item is an updated fee schedule. We're not increasing any fees. We're just making changes to make items more clear on the fee schedule. They're all listed in red. There is one decrease in fees, and that is charging 3% for credit card purchases. That was on the previous fee schedule. We have not been doing that due to COVID-19. It just made things move faster. I would say we should remove the 3% for credit card purchases. And also, we are changing the application for a zoning building fee from $125 to $75. This is not a reduction since that fee is credited towards the final cost of the permit.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Jay and David, any questions or concerns?
I would agree. Jay would agree.
Okay.
Sorry, David.
David?
I agree.
Okay. Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the, excuse me, Fee Schedule Update?
So moved by David.
Thank you. A second?
That's seconded by Jay.
Thank you, Jay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, David here.
Yes.
I have a question. If I, we just step back to item number nine. I know that we approved the new resolution from the solicitor. Did we approve the solicitor's report?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I skipped over that. I apologize. Can I get a motion to approve the township, the solicitor's report? I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to approve the solicitor's report?
So moved by David.
Thank you, David. A second?
I'll second it, Jay.
Thank you, Jay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's move on. Old Business, I have two things here. First of all, back in 2014, I started looking at ways to help save the township some money. So we were looking at, started looking at alternative energy in the form of solar panels that we were planning on putting on the roof, and it would have taken, used, it would have replaced about 35 megawatts of electricity a year. But to keep this conversation kind of short, what we found out in the end was that being a municipality, we, we could not take advantage of any of the money that was available for, that we could have recouped. We could not sell energy credits. There was nothing we could do to actually cut the cost as far as taxes or anything else. So it was coming in at about $100,000, and we just determined at the time that we would not get enough payback to actually make it worthwhile. Well, fast forward six years, and things have changed a lot. The cost of solar has come way down. The panels themselves have increased to the point where they used to be viable for 20 to 25 years, and now they're over 35 years. So I've been working in the last couple of months with Vera Cole, who's my local resident expert when it comes to solar. And we have had long conversations. We've looked at the bills from the township. And we have talked to, we've talked to businesses that do financing for nonprofits and for municipalities to find out what's available. We've talked to people who do large-scale installations to find out how we could go about best and, and, you know, doing an installation and where that would be. And because of that, what we would like to propose is that we move forward with the project, at least to do some more investigation for a 70-kilowatt system, which would generate 84 megawatts of electric a year and cover 100% of the township's energy, electric energy. The project comes in at about $2.50 a kilowatt hour. And what, like I said, what we're finding out is there's other ways we can finance it now. Just for an example, one way would be, well, first of all, we could pay it all ourselves, which there would be no sense in doing that because it would just be too much money. But we can, we could bring in a, a company or an organization that would be willing to finance part of it, let's say, and I'm just going to throw some numbers out there. These are raw numbers. Let's say it was a $175,000 project. We, we put up 75,000, and another business comes in and puts up 100,000. Well, if we do this before the end of the year, the other business could reap a 27% tax benefit off of that, and they could depreciate it for five years. And then after five years, we could buy it back at a much cheaper rate, having saved ourselves a lot of money. And during those five years, we would get a, a decreased cost of, of electricity because we would, we would get to reap a smaller cost per kilowatt hour. So there's a lot of things going on, but I think at this point, what I would like to do is ask the other two supervisors, first of all, if they have any questions, and second of all, I would like to bring Steve Balla, our engineer, in on this project, and Mary Everly, our solicitor, in so that we can make sure that we're following all the proper paths. And then, and then work with some other folks in the township and other businesses just to get a feel for if there's anybody out there that would like to be a participant in this and help with the financing and get, reap, reap the benefits. It, it's a very specialized person, it would have to be a business that has a certain kind of income already, that, that they can reap the benefits. So it isn't just anybody can jump in and do that, but I, and I don't want to get into too much of it here, but at our next meeting, in the July meeting, I would like to present a complete plan if we have time to, to get all this done. So I think, I think it's a great thing for the township that could save us hundreds of thousands of dollars over the next 35 years, actually. So Jay or David, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, David here. I just, just so specifically, what is you're looking for tonight? What approval are you looking for tonight? To do, you're wanting to move forward to do what?
I would like to ask that the township, whenever I bring Steve or Mary into a project, it costs some money. So I, I just, I just wanted to get the buy-in from the other two supervisors to do an investigation and have Steve and Mary join us in this investigation so that 30 days from now, we, we could present something that we think would move forward, or, you know, just get rid of the whole thing if, if that's what it comes out to be. But I think, I think we have something viable here that could really be a big benefit to the township. So I'm asking that the supervisors would approve Mary and Steve to join our project.
And you think that 30 days is going to give you enough time to do what you need to do for the July meeting?
I do, because Vera and I have been looking at this for probably three months, actually, now. And like I said, we've talked to quite a few people. And we've seen a lot of enthusiasm out there. Not so much in Pennsylvania, but in other states like New York, there's a lot of municipalities doing this kind of thing. So we would actually be on the cusp of doing it here in Pennsylvania, and I think, I think we would be a kind of a showcase for a lot of other townships in Bucks County.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes, okay, I was waiting to make sure you were finished, David.
Yeah.
I, I have, I'm willing to listen and to, to learn if we can. I know I was part of the, the last time we looked at the solar and found out that it wasn't viable for, for what it would cost. We went and did a tour up in Richland Township where they spent, I think, over $2 million on their solar grid. And it wasn't really doing what they expected it to do. So I, I do, I do encourage to look at it, and I'm, I'm, I'm willing to, to spend some of our engineer and solicitor's time to do so. But I, but I do have, as we talked before, Mr. Chairman, I, I have big concerns of what happens to the solar panels when they wear out. What do, what do you do with them? Where do you get rid of them?
Well, why that's.
Those are, those are things you can find out, you know, you could, you could try and, try and have an answer for.
Like I said, the newer panels last 35 years or so, so we will, we'll look into that.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Do you have an estimated, do you have an estimated cost, Mr. Chairman, on how much you're going to spend to, in, in, in legal and engineer fees?
I don't think it's much. I think we might need an hour or so of Mary's time, and maybe an hour, maybe two of Steve's. I don't think it's a whole lot of time. Steve may be shaking his head, no, I don't know. But I don't think, I don't, I don't think it'd be a whole lot of time.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, well then, we move forward to that and put it on the agenda for next month to come back with a plan.
Just for the record, I support, I support your investigation.
Okay. And to be clear, the system we looked at in Richland, Jay, ran their entire water authority, all the pumping and everything for their water authority. And
Yes.
they weren't aware at the time that they were not eligible for the the tax credits and things like that. I don't know, they should have been, but they weren't. And I think that's, that's where they got themselves in trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is why we ended up.
When you, when you spend $10 million, you know, you want to, you should know that, I think, but anyway.
You should too. But, but, you know, that's, and that's the exact reason why we couldn't do it last time either, because we found out that we weren't eligible for any of those tax credits or any of the other benefits. So, but that's all available through a different type of plan. So anyway, we'll move forward with that. Thank you. The second discussion I wanted to have was on the barn and the house across the street. We had talked last month a little bit about the barn and the purpose, and I had an action out of that meeting to talk to Brenda Phelan, the chairman of the Historical Society. And it was just a few months ago, not too many months ago, that, that they took over and signed the lease to take over the James House as the new home for the West Rock Hill Historical Society. And since they've taken it over, they've raised over $20,000 in donations. They've installed a basement perimeter drain with a commercial sump pump. They've installed a whole-house commercial dehumidifier. They've installed eight sections of slit rail fence along the front of the house, which added a lot of character to it. They have replaced four of the worst west-facing windows. with Anderson windows, and they have more windows, I believe they're going to be replacing also. They've removed and replaced all the floor tiles in the, in the foyer. And they've installed a new West Rock Hill Historical Society sign out front as of last week. So they are moving along very quickly with that house and they're doing a very fine job. And they, they do have a lot of backing from the community and I'm happy to see that. Additionally, they have people that have been making donations and there are people, there's people willing to, to help them do work just as a volunteer rather than, you know, being paid. So they're making great progress. And I, so I talked to Brenda and said, asked for her feelings on the barn. Is that something that we could put alongside the house and, and have them take it over and do the same thing? We spent quite a bit of money, as Jay could tell you, fixing the summer beam to secure the building, adding the aluminum or the metal siding on the outside just to firm it up. And there is a problem with the roof right now that needs, that definitely needs to be fixed. The Historical Society Committee, the Executive Committee, has said that they would be in agreement to taking the barn and making it part of the overall grounds. And they will be willing to do that, but would have to go before the entire membership to get voted on. So they're at a point where they, they would be ready to put that out to the membership if we wanted to do that. To do that, though, we would have to fix the roof and after that, we would turn it over to them. And I've talked to Mary a little bit about this, about how we would have to do it. And I believe it would be a pretty simple thing to add the barn onto the current lease. Mary, could you just agree or disagree?
Yeah, we, we talked a few days ago and you asked me how complicated it would be. And unless you want an increase in the amount of the rent, which I don't think there is any rent, or, or different terms for the barn, it would just simply be a matter of changing the definition of leased premises to include the barn.
Okay. So I think that purpose alone would be good. And I think, Jay, you wanted a purpose for the barn. I think making that part of the overall farm, the original farm that's been there since, what, the eighteen hundreds or something? I, I think, I think that would be a good thing for the community to have that done. They're looking at having the whole thing restuccoed and, and the inside plastered too. So they're really doing a lot of work and they could use the barn for their, a lot of their artifacts. And they would be more than willing to, to make that part of their overall project. So I open that up. See if Jay and David have any comments on that.
I will, I will, Jay will make a couple of comments. I think that's encouraging. That sounds tremendous. I would ask, though, that you make sure that the Historical Society's Executive Committee, you read that report that was done for the township when they recommended it should be torn. I want to make sure that they understand what they're getting involved in by taking over the barn before we go to that step. But I do encourage, if the Historical Society is interested in, it makes me feel real good because my support to, to, to fix the barn up has always been there. It just hasn't been with taxpayer dollars. And I wanted to make that clear. I support the barn. You and I, Jim, went to a place to show the, the barn committee a barn that was fixed up
Right.
and put back into good shape. And, and we always try to encourage that. My opposition is with spending taxpayer dollars, simply and only that, okay?
Okay. All right. So I'm going to ask, are we in agreement?
I have a question.
Fixing the roof. We would have to fix the roof. And if we're in agreement with fixing the roof, and I am in agreement with fixing the roof, I can tell you that. And because I would like to see the Historical Society move forward this, but I will not fix it. I would not put money into fixing it until we know that the Historical Society is definitely going to, to take it. And that would have to be maybe in a month.
David Collingwood here. Couple of issues or questions. So when you talked to the president of the Historical Society, they, she acknowledged that they would, they're, the executive committee is willing to move forward this and take it back to the membership at large.
Yes.
And if they, if they would come back and say, yes, they are in agreement, was there any stipulation made by the president or any offers made by you that the agreement would be contingent upon the roof being fixed?
Yes, we did have an agreement that the roof would have to be fixed before they took it over.
So before we fix the roof, regardless of what level, then we would have to get the agreement from the Historical Society. Once we have that, then we as a board decide on how to move forward with fixing the roof and how it's going to be paid for.
Yes. And I, and I believe that the membership committee, or I believe that the Historical Society membership would be pulled before our next meeting so that at the next meeting, we could make some decisions.
Good.
Okay. Any other comments, Jay?
I just have one. I'm lost a little bit. I thought I just heard you say that you had an agreement with the chairperson of the Historical Society, that you would fix the roof. How could you do that when we haven't voted on that yet?
What I said was, if, if they agree to take the barn, then we would, it's all contingent, Jay. I may have stated
That's, that's, that's not what I heard you say, though. So I'm just making sure. I want to make sure that we're clear on this.
We have not voted on anything. We've not voted on any. Yep. Right. I may have stated that correctly. Okay. All right. That's all I have for this evening, for old business. Does anyone else have any old business?
I have, David, I have two items. Last week, or last, excuse me, last month, we talked about the intersection of Clymer and Quarry Road. And we also talked about the intersection of Gold Mine and Barnet Road. For Gold Mine and Barnet Road, a white stripe was placed at the stop sign. The township engineer indicated there would be no ordinance necessary in order to put a second stop sign there or to put stop ahead signs prior to the stop sign. Will that be done or are there plans to do that? I guess I would be asking the township manager that question.
Yep. That will be done.
Okay. The white stripe was done the morning after the last D O S meeting, so that was impressive. With the, Clymer and Quarry, stop, accept, right turn. At the last month's meeting, we were told it was part of the codification process and the stop sign would be added to the ordinance. I guess my question is, what is the timeline for the codification?
I'm working on it and I'm almost finished. I'm working on the traffic sections now and the sections are in alphabetical order. So T is pretty close to the end of the alphabet and we're not making changes to S A L D O or zoning. So we're very close.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That's all I have for old business.
Jay, do you have any old business?
Yeah, yes, I do. I have one thing. We, we got the, the anti-skid grit put down on Allentown Road, which I believe was supposed to be for Finland Road. And they, and they put it through the S turn there up by the twin churches. And they said they were going to do the Finland Road next year. Where are we at with that, Greg? Have you heard anything from Pendot? Do you have, do you have a schedule or anything when that's going to be taken care of?
That was just supposed to be the end of spring or summer, Jim.
I think, I thought it was the end of spring. I think we owe him another email.
Yeah, we owe him an email. We have not heard from them. It was either the end of spring or the end of summer, which has come and gone or about to come and go.
About to come and go. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've been traveling that road quite a bit. Yes. Go ahead, Steve.
Oh, I was just going to say, it wasn't a mistake on Allentown Road. When we met them on Finland, they had indicated that they had already planned to do a stretch on Allentown Road. So that was already in the works. Thank you, Steve.
Well, I don't want Finland Road to get forgotten because that, that was our targeted area where we had a lot of issues as well. And while you're, while you're at it, Mr. Chairman, if the manager could also make a note, I noticed at least two spots where the road is broke away. Near the campground area and, and going down that hill there towards the, the bridge. I think from, from debris being in the ditch and then having heavy rains. But I think that should be looked at by Pendot. It's pretty tight on that road, so is it is, when you have to get over to the edge.
I will let Pendot know.
Thank you. That's all I had for, for old business, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Any new business? I have no new business. Jay or David?
I have none at this time.
Okay.
David here. I have three items I'd like to discuss. I feel like we got off to a really good, great start in 2020 as far as accomplishments with the township. And we got somewhat slowed by the COVID-19 issues. And I had been thinking that sometimes meeting once a month at a board of supervisors meeting is just not quite enough. And I don't want to just keep tabling things from one month to the next month and sort of kicking the can down the road. And I know that we used to have work sessions. And I would like to suggest or at least ask this board what they think about maybe reinstituting work sessions so that we can sit down and have one or two items that are really important, that we can really focus on in just one meeting, in a public meeting. And I'm not saying we have to have them regularly scheduled every month, but I really think we should start to revisit work sessions. Comments?
Okay. I, my take on that is I can see a purpose for work sessions, but like you said, not every month. There are some that I think, for example, the budget. I think the budget would be a great opportunity for us to sit down, let the public get involved and and, and give us their thoughts on, on items. That's, that's, and there may be some other big projects that are going on where we could, we can take advantage of, of having a separate session for an hour, an hour and a half or something, just on one topic. So I could see that maybe a few times a year, not, not overwhelming, two or three times a year, in my mind, would probably be enough. But I think I think it'd be worthwhile. Jay?
Yeah, I, I've been involved in a lot of work sessions in the early years and that was, the reason we had work sessions was due to the overwhelming developments that were going on. And that's why we, that's why we did the work sessions. We don't have that kind of development right now. I think, I don't think it would be a smart, smart thing to do to have work sessions now without having the developments or the, or the work to provide them. Because you have to pay money to have a work session. And if you have to have a legal there or an engineer, that's, that's added cost to the taxpayers, which I don't, I just don't think is well-spent money at this time. That's my opinion.
Well, if, if we have a, a topic come up that, that we feel could be to the advantage of the township by having a work session, then we'll bring this up again.
Okay. And I guess the, the way we make that happen is at, at a meeting like tonight, we just make a decision in the next month or whenever, and we set a date and we plan on having that meeting.
Right.
That's how we make it happen. And I don't think it should be tied just directly to housing. I think there are, as you'd say, the, the budget and there's some other things that may come up. I think that should be drivers to have a, a meeting such as this as well.
Well, for example, Mr. Chairman, when I'm, I'm finished with the codification, you'll want to meet and go through the changes that Greg and I are suggesting. Maybe that's a great topic for a work session.
Good idea, Mary. Thank you. Okay. I, I think there's topics out there that we want to discuss in a work session. So as, as, as they come up, we'll decide if we want to hold a separate work session for them. Thank you. Okay. Other new business?
I have two more.
Oh, okay.
The, this is about the farmhouse across the street in James Park. I've been looking at the history of this. The house dates back to at least eighteen eighty-seven and there's been eleven owners, including West Rock Hill in that time. There was even a Harry Lippincott that lived there for three years from eighteen ninety-seven to eighteen ninety-nine or, yeah, two thousand, nineteen hundred. The it, it commonly has been referred to as the James House in James Park. The James family lived there for twenty-four years. The Klinger family lived there for thirty years. It's been recently referred to quite a bit as the Heritage House at James Park. And in deference to all the, all the owners, all eleven owners, I think that it would be a good thing if this board would just recognize, validate and approve that the name be referred to as the Heritage House at James Park to avoid any more confusion by whichever group wants to call the house. I just think we should give it that blessing, my opinion.
I don't, I don't think there's anything in the, in the, in the paperwork or anything when we took over the, the property that says we have to stick with a particular name. Is there?
I can check the will where Ruth James left it to the township. And I'll go over those documents and see if there's any restrictions on how the property is to be identified.
Okay. Because it would still be James Park. James Park. Okay. All right.
Heritage House of James.
I, I don't, I don't support changing the name at all. It was, it was given to the township by the, by Ruth and Frank James. And it should stay that way. That's my opinion only.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Your third item, David?
Yes, I had a request from the Historical Society to ask the board supervisors to permit the township manager how Public Works relocate the outhouse. The outhouse was a piece of, is a piece of West Rock Hill history. It was donated by Mark Lipton from his farm. It was a donation. It's currently been repainted. It's hidden behind the main barn over there. And it would, they would like to have it moved to a more prominent location, possibly facing the house on the left side, not far off the air conditioner compressor. It's a thing of beauty. It's a two-seater.
Where is it now?
It's hidden behind the lean-to portion of the, of the main barn.
Oh, okay. Right.
So, I mean, we moved, they moved it from the Lipton Farm to that location. It's been sitting there for about, I don't know, maybe six or seven, eight years. And it was just recently repainted by Charlie Gunst. So it's, looks like an outhouse.
Okay.
It's a two-seater.
Okay. So my question is, why do we need the township to do that?
Yeah, right. I was going to ask the same thing.
Contractor with a front-end loader. And I mean, it's just like two, it's just, it'd be easier to have Public Works do it if, if they would, if they would, if the board so authorized it.
Is that a, is that a Friday thing? What, I mean, what are we talking about? Thirty minutes worth of work here?
If the, if the backhoe or skid loader has two forks on it, you drive over, pick it up and put it down, fifteen minutes. Yeah, it could be a Friday, a Friday working in the park type thing.
Oh, I don't, I don't have a problem.
Public, Public Works should not be working for the Historical Society on taxpayer dollar. I'm sorry, fellas. That's not right. Somebody, somebody's going to complain about that.
Yeah, all right. I will agree with, with Jay on this. I will agree with, with Jay on this one.
No problem. Thank you. I'll pass it on.
I will be glad to help any way I can to help you guys move it. If you want my.
I would too.
If you want my little tractor or something.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Jay, do you have anything?
No, I don't. Thanks.
Okay. Saying nothing else, let's move to public comment. I know that Greg has a list of items to be discussed, and I think there are some people that want to speak tonight. Before anyone speaks tonight, I'd like to make a point. Public comments are two and a half minutes. The board does not respond to public comments. And we are also, as you know, there's, I know there's some, several people that want to talk about the compressor station and we are in litigation right now. So we will not be discussing from our end, anything to do with the compressor station and the litigation. We cannot do that legally. So go ahead, Greg.
Okay. I have three public comments so far. One person requested that they read their public comments. They're here. So I'll go through the two that are not here. First one is from Shirley Mann, 294 Rich Hill Road. Please enter the attached in tonight's meeting minutes. Thank you. Wednesday, June 17th, 20. 294 Rich Hill Road, Quakertown. I live directly across the road from the proposed Adelphia compressor station. I have lived here for 58 years. I again want the township to know that I am strongly opposed to this compressor station. I am seriously concerned about the pollution and the noise since Adelphia is insisting on not using electric to operate the compressor station. There's also a safety and wildlife to consider. Adelphia should not be allowed to invade my valued quiet country lifestyle. The second one is from Pamela West. Pamela West, 244 Shoe Craft Road, Quakertown, PA 18951. We do not want the compressor station in our neighborhood. It will ruin our natural environment and disrupt the integrity of our community forever. It has been shown that it will affect both the Quakertown swamp and the Butter Creek water quality. It is also true that the industry standards for health, safety to the residents is inconsistent with the health results seen in communities already living with compressors. Albany University study. There tend to be no toxologists or public health authorities on the industry boards. Please continue to pursue the township's legal challenge before the Commonwealth Court in order to have D E P environmental hearing boards' decision reversed. Respectfully submitted. Thank you. There is a third from Christine Shelley, but she emailed me during this and asked if she could read her statement.
Thank you, Greg. I'm commenting on the Adelphia situation. It has come to my attention that West Rock Hill is entering into negotiations with Adelphia. As a citizen who lives less than 1,500 feet from the site, I would like to state plainly that we don't want any compressor station in our residential agricultural community. But if there are actually negotiations pending, the only negotiating I would like to see would be for an electric compressor station. An electric run facility while being more costly upfront to Adelphia would be the best technology available when considering the health, blow off, pollution, environmental and noise concerns of the people who live across the street from the site. Pacuniary negotiations are subject to and can be lost, misdirected, misused, mishandled, misappropriated, and do not take into account future generations living with the results of our present decisions. These agreements could potentially have little to no benefit for the members of this community who live at the site and whose quality of life will forever be impacted if this monstrosity is allowed to move forward. For six generations, my family has enjoyed a clean, quiet life in the country. An electric powered compressor station would be the least you could advocate for in protecting the people of West Rock Hill while Adelphia is allowed to rape our resources for their business ventures of selling overseas. And this all despite Article One, Section 27 of our PA Constitution guaranteeing its citizens that the people have a right to clean air, pure water, and to the preservation of the natural, scenic, historic and aesthetic values of the environment. If this compressor station does go in, it is a sad day for our PA Constitution. It is also a sad day for my progeny and the future generations living in this community who will look back and wonder, what the heck were we thinking? Not to fight this with everything we've got. Thank you for considering my comments. Respectfully submitted, Christine Shelley.
Thank you for your comments.
Also, Mr. Chairman, Cliff Cole sent me an email saying that he would like to speak. So that was his comment. So.
All right.
Thank you. I wrote a letter along with my wife Pamela West and Kathy and Brian Warebach. We sent this letter on 5/28/2020. We did not receive a response from the supervisors and it was sent to the supervisors. I'm a little miffed by that. Here, I would like to read the letter publicly. This is from Pamela West, Cliff Cole of 2440 Shoe Craft Road, Kathy and Brian Warebach of 1385 Willen Road to the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors. At the last supervisors' meeting on May 20th, 2020, the West Rock Hill Township Supervisor voted to have the solicitor take steps to set up negotiations with Adelphia Gateway LLC for some type of settlement. We are very concerned about what might, what that might mean and would like to understand better the rationale for the Board of Supervisors to enter into negotiation. If in fact, any such negotiations were to proceed, we, the undersigned, undersigned would ask that the West Rock Hill Township Board Supervisor advocate for the continuous, continue, continuous of the West Rock Hill Township's legal challenge before the Commonwealth Court in order to pursue the reversal of the D E P's environmental hearing boards unjust decision. We would like to remind you that the supervisors of West Rock Hill are the stewards of the environment for our township. Article One, Section 27 of our state constitution, the Environmental Rights Amendment states, "The people have a right to clean air, pure water, and the preservation of the natural scenic and historical and aesthetic values of the environment." "It is essential to note that these public trustee duties were delegated concomitantly to all branches and levels of the government in recognition that the quality of the environment is a task with both the local and with both local and statewide implications. And to ensure that all government need neither infringe upon the people's rights nor fail to act for the benefit of the people in this area crucial to the well-being of Pennsylvanias. We respectfully ask the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors to heed the above considerations set forth in the West Rock Hill Township. Pamela West, Clifford Cole, Kathy Weinbach and Brian Warebach." I'd like to note that we did not receive any response to this letter. And I don't buy the fact that just because you're in legal, a legal battle with Adelphia, that you can't at least respond to the letter and that you heard our pleas. And I'm also very concerned about what, if there is a financial settlement, you can publicly state what the township might do with a financial settlement if you got one. Is it going to help people who?
Two and a half minutes are up.
Is it going to help people's property values go way down?
Thank you for your comments. Greg?
Let's see. No more public comments.
Okay. If there are no other public comments, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.